Oh, we have two.
Oh, the big court.
Yeah.
And who do you go pick for sheriff?
Uh, Glass Consets.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going, Kim?
All right.
Yeah, I saw the three emails.
Yeah.
My head is just not where it...
You know, honestly, it's been one of those days. Like, I just woke up and I'm just like, you know, I feel okay, don't feel bad. Okay. You ask me where my brain is, probably not here, it's somewhere else.
I'm scared.
I'm gonna ask that much of your resume.
I know what you're talking about.
I know, right?
Yeah, between our mom and then dad.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
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 Oh, God.
Yeah, um, he, I saw him jump on when I jumped on over there.
No, it does. Oh, crap.
It's real.
Especially out.
So they tested the monthly debt from...
Oh, yeah. These couple days.
There's so many else, you know, how you kind of prepare yourself, you know, as you get older.
Yeah, no.
There's so many else.
He can, he can, I keep all my grandparents.
Whoever it is.
I was fortunate enough to have all four of my grandparents up to thirty years old. And, you know, you're, they're getting up there, they're having declining health, and you know it's just gonna be a few more years, and you're still not prepared. It's absurd.
Terrible. Terrible. Hi, guys. Well, did you see all my three emails? I just sent a bunch of emails. You know, because I forgot to attach one document, then I forgot, I grabbed the wrong document, my key version of my September report. I'm sorry, guys, my head is just not where it is.
No, I understand. Yeah, actually, Ken, I'm surprised. But knowing you...
Sometimes you got to look at the ground and go...
It's you every day.
So, yeah, it is, because my dad has been back at the hospital on Saturday. He's finally, yeah, finally on the... Thanks all for that.
Well, you're fine with...
Oh, no, and I, and I would take every one of them.
That, are you? I'm doing well. Good, fine thing.
You doing good on... How's your day? Good. Good.
You made the news last night. Good job.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, gun cam.
Yeah, I thought so.
Was it on KCRG or was it on...
What channel?
Oh, um, if it were... I'll have to look, I didn't see it. I'm not sure I'll be behind any of these on stuff here.
High def, ten eighty.
Thank you.
High definition, ten eighty.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, uh, in the video she put up, that one's last year.
Like, he promoted it.
Right, from last...
At one point I had, the two videos I had, were the ever house and that was really good sight by saying, see how much it is.
Congrats on having foresight to, congrats on having the foresight a year ago to, to do that, yeah. And nobody else in the state going to the...
And she asked, I said, you know, the company, the reading, uh, up in Minnesota, they rolled several of them out, but, uh, you ready to go?
Yeah, five thirty.
Sorry. To be continued.
Yeah. Roll.
How about the city house meeting, regular meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty, roll call, please.
Jerry Moinko.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Steve Dodson.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
The moved. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Citizens input, is there anybody in the audience that would like to approach the mic? Going once, going twice, we will end citizens input, and now, reports from council members, Kim, myself, anybody want to start?
Not for me.
I just have, um, I have just a couple things, I think, I know I mentioned this in my September report, but we will be presenting to the I D O T commissioners on October thirteenth. Initially, I thought I was gonna go and present, or present live, but with all of the things that are going on with my parents at the moment, I've asked Wade Jermaine to, from, from Snyder, just to do a voice override for us. So he's gonna, um, he's gonna put, he's putting that together to send off, and I did have Mayor Bennett do a thank you, uh, to the D O T for their assistance during derecho, because they were definitely a lifesaver, along with keeping Tower Terrace interchange on their dockets and moving forward with that. And then we'll provide them with an update on where we are with our extension of Tower Terrace Road, um, along with where we are with the build grant, those type, and those types of things, and then we'll take, and we'll take the last opportunity also to say thank you for having, seeing the value of Boyson Road interchange improvements, too. They have that in their five-year plan, so we want to make sure we keep that on the radar and thank them for that. And then the second item that I have is, we have a la, kind of a last-minute ribbon cutting. We have Angie Chaplin, who is of mindful leadership, and she is joining Panda Marie, which is in the strip mall with Lux, um, Trends, and all of those individuals, so she is doing a ribbon cutting on Friday at four o'clock, and, um, so, I sent, Bill, are you able to, to do that one?
I'm still on, I'm just gonna come around.
Okay, okay. All right, well, if you'll let Carrie know either way, Carrie will take the lead. You will also, this one will be just a little bit different, because Angie has her main business located in Marion. She is expanding her business here in Hiawatha, so we'll actually do a joint, um, a joint celebration with the Marion Chamber, along with our head co, our head co in City of Hiawatha. So it'll be a little bit unique one, but I felt like this was a great way, an opportunity to show us working together in unity, celebrating small business.
That's awesome. Hey, anything else, anybody? Move right on to business. Public hearing to consider approving and adopting revised community development department permit fees, inspection fees, and filling and meeting fees. And for public hearing at five thirty-five, anybody want to speak in agreement with this? Or, anybody?
I am. Well, I think, uh, we'll close the public hearing and we'll have some discussion on it.
Yeah, and we didn't receive any letters, did we, or phone calls?
Nope, we did not.
Okay, and we'll close the public hearing at five thirty-six.
Um, yeah, in brief, I haven't, in general, I'm not sure that we should really adopt the fees. I kind of reviewed over it, I just don't see a necessary justification for increasing the fees. I think based on the information that community development provided, I think our overall permit fees are about right where they're supposed to be, um, in terms of revenue, while it does raise some revenue, at least from the city administrator's report this afternoon. Short-term revenue projections, I guess I'm not really worried about from that, so I just, I guess there's a, I, I don't see a need for it, so I would almost propose tabling the discussion on it for a time, and maybe redevelop it later, relook at it later.
What was the catalyst, or more of the kind of the idea we need to look at it?
Can you pass? Can you please go up there? Thank you.
Uh, there were a couple of catalysts. Uh, one was a report from Cedar Rapids that indicated that our commercial permits were quite a bit short of what the surrounding territories were, so we decided to take a look at it. And the other was, it has been five years since our last study. So when we took a look at what the permit fees were, we discovered that residentially we're, we're right in the middle, very good, very good. So, we didn't want to change that, but we, we did discover that we are short in comparison when it comes to our cur, our commercial permits. And that does take up a lot of our, um, time and energy, and we've done a lot to improve technology-wise in our plan review processes. But our permit fees have not kept up in terms of that particular aspect, so that was that part of it. As far as the rental properties are concerned, that is, that's basically a comparative study. That particular aspect of what we do does not sustain itself. Generally speaking, um, what we're finding is cities are moving closer and closer to try to make that a self-sustaining program, and, uh, we're not, we're not there yet. But what this does is it keeps us in the middle, puts us right between Marion and Cedar Rapids. And the final aspect, of course, is the development fees. This is new for us, right now we don't have anything, so we are vastly behind, and so we don't recoup any direct cost from any of our reviews from engineering or community development for our development program, and that really, we expend a lot of energy and time and resources on that. So this is an effort to try to bring us in line with, uh, where we're expending our resources.
Yeah, actually, I, I took a differing point of view, Amy. Um, I was very impressed. I really read every word, and, um, my only thought was, maybe we didn't go far enough. Because in any kind of a business, and it doesn't matter whether it's public sector or private sector, you definitely want to cover your costs. And in the private sector, you want to cover your costs, plus make a profit. That's pretty difficult to do in the public sector. But I'm all for accepting these, uh, increases, and in fact, perhaps, we didn't go far enough. Putting us in the middle of the pack, I don't think we as a, as a city are in the middle of the pack at all in the metro area, and I don't think we'll get any pushback whatsoever from the commercial sector. Go ahead.
If I may, we, two things, one is, we did not get pushback, we sent out letters to all of our contractors and our rental property owners, and we only had one concern, and that was making sure they have time to implement the changes in their, in their, uh, projects.
Yeah.
So anything, yeah, anything in the works wouldn't be affected by the change in the, in the fees.
I know, maybe because of all the...
Right, right.
No, and we also took it to the developers.
And we...
Association.
Well, I read that. And they were very receptive, I mean, ended up at two hundred dollars a lot, and that was almost negligible for them, but, of course, they're, not all of them are gonna act that way, which is, but what I was, the other response I had to that, uh, Mr. Olson was, in public, we don't look at it quite the same, because we don't have profit.
Yeah.
But the other part is, our research and our enforcement is all public duty, so we don't mind if there's a combination of general fund and specific fee to cover our costs.
Exactly.
So...
Yeah, it just has to...
That balance is kind of nice, because everybody has a little skin in the game.
Yeah, our fees have to be reasonable, is really how we look at it.
Yeah.
And when you're, and that's, one of the ways to do that is certainly by comparing, comparing ourselves, and then looking at the hours that we spend, and the number of people that look at one particular project.
Yeah.
And so with that, then, comes with the reasonable fee that we can defend as we move forward.
Yeah, I looked over all the, the costs and the proposed, uh, fees, and I thought they were very reasonable, you know, and, uh, come from a family that had a couple of businesses, you know, it was just the cost of doing business with the city, you know, and, and building, and, uh, I don't think those fees are exorbitant at all. Kind of lean a little bit toward Mr. Olson, you know, that they're more way than fair. Uh, it had room to go up if needed, but as long as it covers the cost, you know, I like the way they're structured as, as proposed.
And I think the other thing we need to consider, to Kim's point, um, we're only going to see commercial growth, and now's a good time to make these changes, to get a, if you will, a bit ahead of the curve, so that we can be there when all this other commercial development comes into effect. I, I did not see, particularly with the ranges that you provided, I didn't see any disincentive to a builder or developer coming into Hiawatha and continuing to build and develop, and you discussed this with the council, so...
I mean, I don't think there's any, you know, disincentive from the fees, I do think it's a little bit of administration creep in terms of what we offer, in terms of fees and financing and passing on and, you know, additional ways of revenue, and I just don't necessarily see that it's needed at this juncture, so, I mean, if I'm the only one, I'm the only one, but, you know, go from there.
I think that it is kind of administrative creep to move on, make sure we're, the increases are needed, we're never gonna turn a profit, we're never gonna break even in what we do, and I would, in this case, I'd like to be at the bottom of the pack, or the front of the pack, because providing a service we do at such a reasonable cost is something that we love and pride about. I mean, if they're reasonable, it's not gonna change.
Right. Okay, all the lead ads.
Okay, so, motion to approve resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Nay.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
B, consider resolution amending five minute meeting fees, effective January first twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Nay.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
B, consider resolution amending five minute meeting fees, effective January first twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one. Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Nay.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
C, consider resolution amending eighteen dash zero seven nine by setting new fees, chapter one six three, housing code schedule and fees effective January first twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Nay.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Okay, number seven, public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with the Hiawatha Property LLC, that's at fifteen seventy-five Kettleson Drive, and we're gonna start the public hearing at, uh, five forty-six. Anybody in the audience would like to come up? If not, do we have anything in the mail? Carrie?
Uh, no, we have not.
Nothing in the mail?
No.
Okay, we don't have any takers on the audience, so we're gonna close the meeting at five forty-seven. A, consider resolution approving the authorization execution of development agreement by and between the City of Hiawatha and Hiawatha Properties LLC at fifteen seventy-five Kettleson Drive. So moved. Discussion?
Another fine building.
Yeah.
We know who attended yet? I'm always curious.
Sorry?
I don't know who attended.
We know Home People's going up there, but, anyway.
Yeah, that's my...
Anyway, um, roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number eight, consider resolution changing the position title for the city administrator of City of Hiawatha, or City, to City Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Probably long overdue.
Yeah, long, long overdue.
She's held the title, obviously. Okay, excellent, uh, roll call.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number nine, consider resolution setting public hearing date October twenty-first, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty-one, city administrator to reflect the position title change from city administrator to city manager and update the language throughout the chapter.
So moved.
Mister Mayor, before you do roll call, just, just to let everybody know, um, the mayor and, uh, Councilman Olson and I all met about this, so I will be drafting the revised chapter twenty-one, which I, which I will circulate to those two in advance of the meeting, basically need to refine it, and then you'll have a final draft, uh, for the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mark. Sounds good. Excellent, thanks, Mark. Okay, roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number nine, consider resolution setting public hearing date October twenty-first, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty-one, city administrator to reflect the position title change from city administrator to city manager and update the language throughout the chapter.
So moved.
Mister Mayor, before you do roll call, just, just to let everybody know, um, the mayor and, uh, Councilman Olson and I all met about this, so I will be drafting the revised chapter twenty-one, which I, which I will circulate to those two in advance of the meeting, basically need to refine it, and then you'll have a final draft, uh, for the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mark. Sounds good. Excellent, thanks, Mark. Okay, roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Number eleven, we had scratched number ten. Number eleven, consider resolution approving amendment of professional service agreement with Shive Hattery for the city hall plaza.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
That was a great presentation they gave last week, and it was fun.
Yeah, wasn't it though?
Yeah, and it's, and it's exciting, and it's...
It's perfect timing for what we got going on.
It's just on, Bill, uh, give them your, your viewpoint, uh, for the public record, in, in terms of the, the cost versus the, uh, potential upside.
The cost versus the... Yeah, my, my viewpoint was, you know, this is, we're looking at, you know, tens of millions of dollars in reflective, uh, uh, development in the area that's gonna absorb this kind of entertainment level, and, uh, I was actually with a, a person that has, uh, a small venue in Cedar Rapids that has a amphitheater, and he was asking about it, so I showed him our ideas and, and, uh, very interested, and, uh, so I think that there's gonna be a big response to what we can do with that.
Your, your comment about, uh, a million-dollar investment for a potential payback of a hundred million...
Right.
Just really struck home with me. One percent, I wish I could get that kind of payback in my business.
Yeah, and I need to.
I'm sure Jerry does, too.
And another definition of beautiful downtown Hiawatha, so...
Yep, right, yep, absolutely gives us that, that character and that downtown feel that we've been searching for.
Doesn't it though?
Perfectly complement the Village Center once it's built.
Yeah, right there on the trail and...
And it's another practical investment of what we've already made, this investment here, you know, that we can spin off at the nighttime and different weekends and stuff, that this parking lot can have justification for all.
Absolutely.
It really completes our quadrant, or the four quadrants, so...
And the visibility of two major cross-sections here in town, you get a lot of visibility, even from the people that don't live here, but double our population every day, you know, will have an opportunity to see that, you know, make, entice them to come back after work with their families to utilize the park area, so...
Absolutely.
Can't, can't wait to see it.
That with the quiet zone and everything, we're just...
Opportune moment.
Okay, we'll go on, or roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number twelve, grinding of trees and tree removal in the parks, R F B dash zero one, projects four, five, and six. Hey, consider resolution approving change order number one. So moved. Second. Discussion?
Guthridge took a different look, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it did.
Excellent. Okay, roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Twenty twenty, storm recovery project, tree falling and hanging removed in the, right away, R F B number zero three, review bids. B, work contract. Have a motion?
So moved.
Still thinking of the plaza.
Have these people ever done this before? Have they recognized...
I know. I know, we, we thought, we thought the same thing.
Lucky to get people to respond. Yeah, you know, it's a sad thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're doing, they are doing work in the, in the metro area, so I think it looks like we, we, we believe we have a good bid.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number fourteen, City of Hiawatha Amnesty Day Refuge Pickup. Hey, consider resolution approving and making, awarding the contract to Amnesty Day Pickup Event. Second. Discussion?
Oh my God, I'm so excited for this.
Yes.
You can tell when you're driving up the street if it's amnesty or if it's, what we have going, I mean, there's piles everywhere.
Well, this would be nice to have them doing every day of the month. It'd be perfect for them. Get them one and then let them work.
Yeah, yeah.
And boy, you drive around Cedar Rapids and Marion, which they've done recently, it's really...
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable what they've got.
They got long ways to go.
Oh, God.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number fifteen, twenty twenty, West Williams Street Rehabilitation Project. A, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number two. So move. Second. Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Number 16, Hiawatha Public Library Expansion and Renovation Project. A, consider resolution acknowledging the library board's resolution and authorizing payment estimate number 15.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Just glad to see the development proceeding at pace over at the library and, uh, like it's, you know, you can kind of hear in there and still see the, the renovation in the old section of it, but it's definitely, I'm glad to see where it is and it's kind of getting towards that completion.
It's a race between the two contractors, you know, and how they're taking.
Right.
Not gonna say, but there might be some bets out there.
For sure.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number 17, Hiawatha Public Safety and Training Facility Project. A, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number four.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Rob Archibald. Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
And B, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number five.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number 18, consider resolution authorizing finance director to make the applicant inter, inter-fund transfer of sums and record the same in the approximate manner for FY 2021 for the City of Hiawatha, Iowa.
So move.
Any discussion?
Kim, just a quick comment, is, is that the proceeds from the, um, the first CD that was retired? That's the million-two that we're using for these funds?
To, for these transfers here. But in these, these are just the inter-loan transfers. So it's more, it's just, it's our, our bookwork is what these transfers are about for projects. That's what these are. These are, this isn't like our, this isn't our C, it's not our C D.
Yeah, it's not the million-two that, that's first C D matured that we're gonna reinvest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, wait a first and a second. We have a roll call.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 19, consider resolution approving new job description and range of pay, including benefits for firefighter, EMT, and paramedic. So move. Second. Discussion?
I did get a little nervous. Been away from what we typically hired as candidates. A candidate we hired doesn't terminate, but I'm trying to make sure we don't think that's needed, so. You know, just real quick, Mr. Tha, with a paramedic position, it does not require the fireside. I think we have a strong enough base of firefighters, that's okay. But what it will do is when we go to hire that position, it's gonna expand the availability of people that may be interested in coming to work for Hiawatha. There are people that are interested in coming to work for Hiawatha, but because we require the fire certification, they don't apply. So, and I'm really, we're kind of laying the foundation for us as we grow in the next several months, that's what we're gonna do.
And Mike, I know the first month that we were working is average about 1.5 transfers a day. Has that increased now?
That's still where we are.
Okay.
So we're about one and a half.
Okay.
And that's, we're six sometimes, you can say we're not sometimes, so. Sixty-six times since they opened up.
It's a good number, isn't it?
This resource to be able to make that higher and, and future hires. And also adding some salaries, if you will, to some of these positions that you're looking at coming up.
Yeah, and we'll have more business to provide to you along that line. We'll discuss what matters, that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinko.
Aye.
Number 20, consider resolution approving a 2080 agreement with Iowa Alcohol Beverages Division for tobacco, alternate nicotine, and vape products and enforcement.
So move.
You still got one, Olson, Tom?
We do this every year, it's a great program.
I know, but I mean, I, I think that name goes a lot.
Yeah, the one vape shop did, I know it's not there anymore.
They only sell vape stuff down the, like, the.
Not the old pieces.
I believe they did, I'm not sure if it's still good, I think they did. There's some, there's some changes in that this year. Last year, I think it was last year, we went after and tried to buy vape products from, from retailers in town. They did sell that. They, they changed the, any partners now with the, the change of law, so our cooperating individuals now could be anywhere from 16 up to 20 years a page, so we've got a little bit older person in there, and that's probably what will test this year is we'll probably go to a back to your 20 rule and, uh,
Is it mostly just the gas stations that still sell the tobacco products, or are we at other?
Yeah, we're, we're, yes. Southern, and, uh, very, they're listing a whole big volume of gas station.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.